God, that's great.[23.12][23.12](laughter) I would like to call this meeting to order. Will the Secretary please call the roll?
Mr. Corangelo.
Here.
Mrs. Chu.
Here.
Mr. Sizmar.
Here.
Mrs. Gwass.
Here.
Mr. Hong.
Here.
Mrs. Lax.
Here.
Mrs. Reese.
Here.
Mr. Winston.
Here.
President Becker.
Here, we have a quorum. Please rise and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Board of Education has posted notice at the Board of Education offices, and written notice was also provided to the Sentinel, the Newark Star-Ledger, the Home News, and Tribune, and the Municipal Clerk of East Brunswick. All Board of Education meetings, with the exception of executive session discussions, are videotaped for later broadcast. Individuals who speak at the Board's public meetings should be aware of these videotaping rules. Good evening. To say it is great to be here would be an understatement. We are thrilled to be here. I cannot believe the summer is over. So first of all, getting school open this year, as with any year, but especially this year, is a monumental challenge, and I want to thank Dr. Valeski and the entire central office staff, all the administrators, teachers, support staff, for all they're doing, all they have been doing, to open schools. Also, during the summer, there were several times the district needed assistance from the township first responders, like the volunteer firemen and the EB police. They were always responsive and helpful, and we appreciate their efforts and time greatly. I also want to give a shout out to two fellow elected public officials I see in the audience tonight who are instrumental in keeping this town going, keeping us safe, and are the best cheerleaders for East Brunswick by now: Mayor Cohen and Councilwoman Sharon Sullivan.[188.08][188.08](applause) And now, we will start off, as we always do, with the superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone, in person, finally, as President Becker said. New teacher orientation took place August 24th, 25th, and 26th at Hammershold Middle School, where we welcome nearly 80 new staff members. Special thanks to Nicole Tibbetts, who coordinated the event, and to all our administrators who provided high-quality professional development for our certificated staff. On Wednesday, August 25th, the Child Nutrition Department held a job fair right in this room to recruit food service workers. Thanks to their efforts, we put about one dozen local residents to work this September. This week, we held well-attended student orientations at each of our schools. A very special thank you to Girl Scout Troop 81624, who provided over 50 filled backpacks for some of our needy students, and to the Student Services Department for hosting a back-to-school supply drive. With our community partners, we were able to successfully fill over 90 backpacks total. Thank you so much to all who donated and our special helpers from the Girl Scouts. Some important reminders as the first day of school approaches. Student information forms are open through Parent Access. Please take a few minutes to fill out these important annual forms. And we do want to emphasize they are important. In many ways, this is our way to contact family members should we need to get ahold of you if there's an issue with your child. Bus passes are available through Parent Access. If you do not have Internet access, please contact the school's main office to obtain copies of these important documents and forms. And Thursday, September 9th, as we all know, is the first day of school for all students. And, believe it or not, our facilities fared pretty well through last night's storm, so we are ready to go. And Thursday, September 16th, the district will be closed for fall recess. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Valeski. And I believe we are starting out with a presentation this evening, Career and Tech Ed Pathways. Who will be presenting?
We have Ms. Jamie Kennard, who's the Assistant Director of Alternative Programs.
Terrific. Welcome, Jamie.
Good evening. Good evening. I want to start out by saying it's a pleasure to see the Board in person again. I'm very excited for the opening of schools that'll be happening next week. My name is Jamie Kennard. I'm the Assistant Director of Alternative Programs. I want to thank you for taking the time to view our presentation about a very exciting program that we're working on called Career Pathways for our Students. What you see here is some of the fastest-growing jobs, according to the U.S. Department of Labor. Now, five or 10 years ago, we might have been talking about jobs like lawyers and doctors. But what you see here are jobs associated with skills and trades. We might have been talking about higher education for eight years to earn some of those doctor's degrees. But we're at a point now, as you can see, that a student can walk out of high school with their diploma and earn a living wage. The state of New Jersey recognized that this is so important that they introduced a series of unique standards, including personal financial literacy, career awareness, and career and technical education. Now, the question is, how does this impact East Brunswick? For the class of 2021, 92% of our students reported attending Institute of Higher Education, including two and four-year universities. But 7% of our students reported plans to join the armed forces or seek employment. And 1% of our students reported plans to attend business, technical, or military schools. In East Brunswick, it's our job to meet the needs of all learners, and we have to serve both the students who are attending college and those who are making different decisions. And to do that, we have a vision from grade seven all the way through grade 12, and that includes exposure, exploration, and college and career readiness. For exposure, we want to develop an understanding of the possible career opportunities that are available out in the world, as well as an idea of the skills necessary to complete those jobs. For exploration, we want students to research and explore the labor market, skills, and the requirements for their careers that they may be interested in. And finally, for college and career readiness, we want students to explore an area that they're interested in for several different career pathways. We want them to gain experience in that field, to develop industry skills, to work toward career and technical education, a senior internship, and finally, a clear pathway to earn college credit throughout their high school career. Before I set the term CTE, and to be clear, CTE stands for Career and Technical Education, which are programs focused on career preparation, skilled trades, and applied sciences. And they help make our students marketable to the workforce after high school. To be clear, we're going to utilize a CTE model for East Brunswick. CTE itself requires significant training in the field, and so instead of following CTE immediately, we're going to follow that model for East Brunswick. What will CTE look like? The entire goal of this career pathway is to give students the opportunity to maximize their experiences while in high school, to explore their interests before they leave us after graduation. For us, the pathways are going to be non-binding. We want students to explore as many pathways as they possibly can. Certifications and internships in those fields, though, may require the completion of that sequence. And we want to focus on modifying what we currently have. And finally, the key is the internship in their senior year. What you see here is what's called career clusters, formed by the state of New Jersey. And what we did is took those career clusters and put them into a series of buckets. As you can see along the top, those are the career clusters, and underneath are specific areas associated with those clusters. For example, in human services, you have education and training, law and public safety, government, public administration, and so on and so forth. So the question is, what could this look like in East Brunswick? To specifically follow hospitality and tourism, our goal is first, in grade seven and eight, to do career exploration, followed by grade nine to 12 would be the keys to their pathway. So for example, in grade nine, they could have Introduction to Hospitality and Tourism course and Information Technology applications. What you're looking here at here is the curriculum from the state of New Jersey for the CTE pathway. And next to it, you see terms like Culinary Arts I and Culinary Arts II. The idea being that we're going to modify the courses that we already have to fit with this model. Our timeline is over the course of three years, where we're going to continually assess and monitor and implement over those three years. For the upcoming year, we're going to look at the revised curriculums, where they've included areas of career education. It's also our opportunity to research our first CTE pathway. Ideally, we're going to research and complete finance and business first. In our second year, we're going to pilot and monitor that first pathway, followed by researching our second pathway. And so you see continually, over those three years, we're going to pilot, assess, monitor, and implement over those three years. And finally, in our last year, again, we'll monitor the second CTE pathway, but it's also an opportunity for us to research any additional pathways that we did not have yet. I want to thank you for committing to meeting the needs of all learners, and thank you for listening to my presentation. If there are any questions at all, I'd be happy to address them.
Anyone have any questions?
If I could just make a comment on the end of Jamie's presentation. So what you're seeing here tonight is the vision of this pathway and the redevelopment. We'll bring it before the Board for formal approval, and hopefully begin to revise the curriculum this year and move this out, as Jamie suggested, over the next three years.
Jamie, I actually had a question. The internship for senior year, could you just very briefly tell me what that's going to look like? Are we partnering with local businesses?
Yes.
What is that going to look like for the kids? Will they go to school half-day? How will they get to the place where they're interning?
Yeah, so we're looking at an extension of our co-op program right now, and I think it's really important to bring the community in in these moments. What we want to do is place students in the internship in the area that they're interested in. So for example, for following the accounting, I really would like to work with some of the community to place them into an accounting firm or an accounting area so they can get those skills in that area before they leave us.
Okay. Thank you. Be real interested as this develops. Lee Wu.
So Jamie, thank you very much for your very good presentation. I have two questions for you. So how much resource do you anticipate to start this program? Second, how many students do you anticipate will join this program? And additionally, maybe it's a good idea to have an inventory of East Brunswick business so we can prepare our own student to do the internship locally, because they don't need to drive, they know each other for the safety, it's more convenient. So maybe you can work with township like Mayor Brad Cohen to have a list of business in this town, so we can talk to them, build a relationship, send our student for the internship.
I think it's a great idea, and I really appreciate your feedback. I have been to the Chamber of Commerce meetings of East Brunswick, and just from that anecdotal data, I could tell you that I really feel the community is interested in working with our schools. So I definitely appreciate that feedback, and I will work toward that goal.
So please answer my question.
Yeah, so the number of students, I don't have specific data on, but I feel that in East Brunswick, we certainly have opportu-- we offer so much, and I would really, I really feel that it's an opportunity for students to take what we do and maximize their experiences. So I can't give you a specific number right now, but I certainly can go back and look at the data. In terms of the amount of research that I'll need to do, we've done significant research so far, and I'm working directly with the supervisors regarding what they know and the resources that they have. But I do anticipate us, this is the beginning of that career pathway, and I will continue to do the research necessary to make the program happen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lori, then Susanna. Then Jeff.
Great presentation. This is very exciting.
Thank you.
One question, going back to in the original slide, you talked about how kids can actually graduate now, there's nurse practitioner, somebody in other fields. Will this feed into or work with our pathways program at all in terms of what specific degrees that, not degrees--
For Middle-Six College?
Yeah, for the middle, the pathways. Like, will it work together? I know we're talking about internships, but from the educational part of it, will that help us? Because the kids will certainly need to have a degree of some sort. If you're going to be a nurse practitioner, it can't just be a high school degree.
Correct.
So will we be able to use that program to help this one?
Absolutely. And that's the goal, actually, is to integrate them together. So we've done a lot of work on the backend, especially for the upcoming year, to get out word regarding the college pathways program, and we've also done a great job in giving students the resources they need to plan out those credits. The idea here is that we want to line up the pathways with those that are dual enrollment so that way a student can walk out of here with a maximum number of college credits and also have the skills in those areas.
That's great. I think that's terrific. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great.
Yeah, thanks for that question, Lori. That was one of the things I was wondering, too, is how it ties to that program. And then the second question was just a clarification. I think you were saying that we were going to do it in phases. I don't know if that's the word you used. And the first one would be business and finance. Do we have the other areas, and does it need to be one each year? Because that seems to be, it'll take a long time before we get to everything that we want to get to.
Yeah, absolutely not. And so the goal is to speed that up, but I want to make sure what we do, we do right, and we lay the foundation. And we feel that the finance and business pathways are the ones that are most built right now for us to be able to mold to what it is that we need. After that, that's why I said in year two and year three, we're going to definitely accelerate the expansion on that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeff?
Ms. Kennard, I think this is great, especially for a student who's not looking necessarily to move up to higher education. With that in mind, with this training, is a component of this going to include any job placement help for the seniors, and in addition to that, general coursework on resume design, how to get a job once they have all of these skills?
I think that as we continue to monitor that, that should be something that we include. So I know right now it's part of our co-op course, some of those pieces. I think that we can definitely get to continue to include that in real time as students start to develop towards that specific goal.
Barb?
Thank you. Thank you again for your presentation and for being on topic of workforce needs. And I understand finance is business similar to what Susanna said is first. Is there an effort maybe to survey the students to see what interests they have and what kind of programs might be popular with the students?
Absolutely. And so we wanted to first start with the research component to it, but absolutely we want to get the input from the students about what they're interested in. And we're going to look at that across multiple grade levels so that as we grow, we can see if their interests change from the younger grades all the way through high school.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you for your time.
Jamie, thank you.
We look forward to hearing about the progress. You're going to have to come back.[1067.12][1067.12](applause) Now we just need some East Brunswick businesses.
Yeah, well, I had a--
I don't mean to look in your direction.
If I had a high school student come to my school in preparation for when she graduated, and she was 17, so she was allowed to come, so she came, the perfect opportunity. I would even volunteer my time if, you know, township wants to get involved, I'll do what I can, because I want to do that with other grade.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Mark. Okay, now we come to the good of the cause for the public. As I have been doing, I wanted to remind the public that the Board of Ed feels that this is time for the public to come speak to us. This is not a time for us to engage in a dialogue with you. This is your time. So please don't mistake our silence for anything but very dedicated listening. Any questions you have? Dr. Valeski and his staff will make sure that they are answered by the appropriate administrator as soon as possible, will get your contact information. Again, this is your time to come and talk to us. We're not going to, don't worry, we're not going to have a dialogue with you. This is your time. So with that being said, the Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on school matters of community interest. Participants will be limited to three-minute duration.
If I, I'm sorry, and if I may, Mrs. Becker, just as a reminder, when you come up to the podium, please clearly state your name and your address, including your town, from which you're from.
Took the words right out of my mouth.[1186.66][1186.66](laughter) What he said. Okay, is there anyone wishing to speak to the Board tonight? Please come up to the podium. And as a gentleman to my left said, please state your name and address, including your town, for the record.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Fernando Gilio. East Brunswick, obviously. 291 Bromley Place, East Brunswick. I have one student, one of my, one of my sons goes to Hammershold, and the other one is in Orange Dock. One of the things that I just wanted to bring to the Board's attention, first, let me say thank you for your service. I've had the pleasure of dealing with a few of you personally, and I just wanted to thank you for your service. I think you guys are doing a pretty good job. I do have a concern from what I've been hearing from my sons and some other students about critical race theory and a flavor of it being pushed in some of the classes. Now, it's not as bad as some of the things that I've heard in other districts, but it's something that I certainly would like to see some type of a policy on, or how the Board is going to handle it, if it supports it, if it doesn't. And I think it's something that, you know, parents at least should know how the Board would deal with teachers who are promoting that in the classroom. The other, you know, if you guys would be able to publish it or just let, you know, the public know, because it is something that I know a lot of parents have concerns about. I certainly do. I'm not afraid to discuss them. Some are. The other thing that I'd like to bring to the Board's attention is the fact that, you know, with the pandemic, we had a lot of kids just completely immersed in screen time. And whatever study you read, you're going to quickly realize that it's not good, and that it causes a lot of issues for kids as they get older. You know, so while we put mandates on everything with regard to the pandemic and the important issues, certainly, we can't just ignore the mental health issues of the pandemic, and we should give it the same weight, really, that we give how we're dealing with the pandemic. We really should, because I haven't seen that yet.
15 seconds.
Okay. And with that, my thank you. I haven't turned any even speak with you guys. Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming to speak to us tonight.[1379.12][1379.12](applause) Is there anyone else who would like to address the Board? You can--
This is not an opportunity for a back and forth. This is the opportunity for the public to comment and the Board to listen.
I'm sorry?
Where will the answer be given? Can we, can we deviate from the norm for one moment tonight?
Sure.
Can I respond?
The question's answered. When will--
I'm actually going to give a response, if you don't mind.
Okay.
East Brunswick Public Schools is committed to ensuring all students feel welcome and accepted. All of our curriculum is fully aligned with the New Jersey learning standards, and content is taught in a developmentally appropriate level by a certificated teacher. Critical race theory is not a component of the East Brunswick Public Schools curriculum. East Brunswick Public Schools classrooms foster students' critical thinking skills. Our teachers include an array of perspectives and sources when teaching historical content to help students form their own ideas, but not to coerce students to any particular way of thinking about an issue or historical event. Instructional materials that provide dominant opposing views are introduced on controversial issues that represent an inclusive perspective of religious, ethnic, cultural groups, as well as representatives from a variety of sexual orientations and gender identifications, and their contributions to American history. And we have a policy 2530 and regulation, I'm sorry, in associated regulation 2530 that address the curriculum of East Brunswick Public Schools.
So you're not, you're not giving the teachers any kind of curriculum? You're not giving them any--
Right, so-- I'm sorry, I'm sorry. So Dr. Valeski did answer the question, but we can't go back and forth.
But you can come up--
That's not the opportunity. The public may come up to comment.
Please come up. We'd love to hear--
But not engage in a back and forth.
I just, I just wanted to add what he's saying. Are you giving the--
First, we just, ma'am, would you mind--
My name is Linda, and I'm not going to give anything else. I live in East Brunswick, so you can, I don't know, cancel me or whatever.
What's your last name, please?
I'm a grandmother. No, I'm not giving that. All I want to know is what he was saying. Are you teaching, are you giving any instructions to your teachers on equity and all this other stuff with the CRT? Are you, are you bringing outside people and having your teachers in East Brunswick watching videos or anything about equality and CRT and the other stuff that's going on in this world right now, other than arithmetic, history, and American, you know, our history that we've all been brought up on? Are you giving stuff to the teachers, bringing outside people and a taxpayer's money, and having them learn about equality, so-called equality, which is the CRT? Are the teachers being taught this, or are you bringing outside people in? That's all I'm asking.
We always, we always use resources to provide professional development to our teachers, and we do invest in equity training with our teachers.
What is equity training to you? Without reading from a piece of paper, what does that mean in a normal person?
We're now deviating from--
What, what, what is--
Excuse me, ma'am.
Yes, I understand, but--
Excuse me.
Okay.
We are deviating from what the protocol is. We're not going to change the protocol because you're insisting on it.
I'm not asking that. I'm just asking what does it sound--
You want to engage in a conversation. You want to engage in a discourse. This is not a time for a discourse.
Sir, I am not discursing from anything. I'm going to concern grandparents. I'm not even a--
So ma'am--
Hi, ma'am.
What I would suggest--
All I'm asking is what--
Ma'am, if you can provide your contact inform--
Ma'am, this is our lawyer.
If you provide your contact information, the superintendent can respond to.
No, I meant, why can't you tell me what equality learning is for your teachers? What, are you bringing outside people in, and we're paying for it? What are they teaching the teachers about CRT and equality?
Okay, ma'am.
Can you explain that?
Provide a comment up to three minutes.
It's not a comment.
At the end of your comment, the superintendent--
It's not a comment. I'm asking what--
Ma'am, you're not allowing me to explain. So if you're going to be confrontational, then we'll just add your comment period is done then.
Excuse me, I am not being confrontational.
All right, so if you would please let me--
The clock is still running here.
Okay.
Thank you.
Please provide your comment, which may be inclusive of questions.
It's not a comment, it's a question. Can you tell me, if you're bringing--
All right, ma'am, thank you so much.
--in outside people to teach equality to the teachers, what does that mean? What are you teaching the teachers to teach our children about equality? I think parents need to know.
The reason why they--
Mark, Mark. That's all I'm asking.
Please don't engage.
The whole world is, is, I mean, I am not talking about politics--
Yep, you have 15 seconds, ma'am.
--because I'm either Republican or Democrat, I'm an independent. But I am concerned about what my grandchildren--
10 seconds.
--are being taught in our public schools and where my taxpaying money is going to.
Five seconds.
So if you're bringing outside agencies in to teach the teachers--
Ma'am, your time is up.
--about equality, I want to know what you are teaching them, exactly. What can I see the big news?
Your time is up, ma'am.
That you are teaching them.
Ma'am, your time is up.
All right, will you answer me?
Your time is up.
Okay.
Thank you.
Will I get an answer?
You may leave your contact information, and we will get back to you.
Will you answer the public?
Ma'am, your time is up.
All right, my time is up, but--
Please step away from the podium. Thank you.
If you would leave, ma'am, if you would leave your contact--
I'm not leaving my name so I can get canceled like the rest of the world. Forget it.
Okay, okay.
I'm a grandparent.
Please put your mask on.
Ma'am, ma'am, put your mask on. Ma'am, put your mask on, or we're going to have to ask you to leave. Please put your mask on.
It is on.
No, it's not.
No, it's not.
It's not on because I can't--
Get her out of here.
She's breaking all the rules.
Ma'am?
You're me or you? Who are you?
Okay. Okay, everybody, here's the deal. Ma'am, I'm sorry. Your time is done.
It's done, I'm done.
Ma'am, excuse me.
No, I'm, so I'm done. I'm apologizing to you. I'm done.
Please don't apologize. All I'm trying--
I'm done.
All I'm trying to say is, if anyone has a specific question--
It was.
--it will not be answered this evening. If you wish to leave your contact information, either by email or phone number, you are more than welcome to, and an-- You are more than welcome to, and an administrator will get back to you. Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to the board this evening? Please come up to the podium, and if, if there's, if you want to get online, if you feel, you can get online, or sit in your seats, whatever more comfortable. Welcome, sir. Good evening.
Okay, so my name is Lori Ginsburg, and I've lived in East Brunswick for 21 years with one child.
Good evening, Lori.
Sorry. Sorry?
I said, "good evening."
Oh, hello. I'm very focused on getting in my stuff. So I reside at Two Chris Court in East Brunswick, and first, I'm in absolute support of the East Brunswick Schools' mask mandate. Masks are essential for having even a chance of safely operating schools with in-person instruction. Not only has the governor issued a mask mandate that our school district is legally required to follow-
Excuse me, ma'am. Ma'am, if you can't keep yourself quiet, you'll be removed. This is not a circus. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Could you please, please restart the clock for this woman? Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
So not only has the governor issued a mask mandate that our school district is legally required to follow, but masks are proven in numerous studies to reduce COVID transmission. Some people claim that children aren't at risk of COVID, but the latest government data as of yesterday shows that an average of 340 children are getting hospitalized for COVID every day. Schools across the country, including states like Idaho, Tennessee, Florida, Ohio, Pennsylvania, and Indiana, just to name a few, are changing course, learning from experience already this school year, that without masks, they've seen an explosion of COVID cases that have forced a number of schools to close their doors temporarily. A growing number of schools in states without mask mandates have decided to implement the mandate, have, sorry, have decided to implement the mandates at the school district level, and we should learn from their experience. We entrust our children to the school district, and in the current public health crisis, there is no other option than to require masks. Now, one comment I did add after coming into this meeting is I do hope that enforcement of proper mask-wearing over both the nose and the mouth will be more rigorously adhered to and enforced than it is here tonight. Second, to give East Brunswick Schools a better chance to remain open, every, I'd like to see every classroom have a HEPA filter unit if they can't accommodate MERV-13 filters. My understanding is that is not being done, and I understand it's a big expense. What I would like to say is that I would like to see at least the HEPA filters in any space where students will be eating, and therefore without a mask for a period of time. So I just ask the board to seriously consider or reconsider this option. Lastly, even with mask mandates, given the crowded hallways in East Brunswick High School and lunch with no masks, I am concerned that we will see a significant number of COVID cases. If this happens, I would hate for school to return to fully virtual instruction. My daughter happened to thrive during second semester, when she went to school every day for the morning classes, and then took online instruction in the afternoon. So my only ask is that if we see the COVID cases rise, and, you know, we're having issues, that we try to strive for-
Thirty seconds.
-creative hybrid options, should there be a need to reduce the volume of, of students in school. So working out something with at least half a day where kids can come in, in person. Thank you very much, I do appreciate your listening.
Thank you. Thank you for coming to speak to us tonight. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to the board? Yes, sir, please approach your podium.
My name is Jim Carr, 38 Agate Road. I have two kids in the school system. Last week, I sent each of you guys 58 documents that basically said the exact opposite of what you just heard. I'm hoping you guys had a chance to read at least one of those studies. But, you know, what you're going to hear tonight is a little bit of righteous indignation. I have a right to be angry because I feel that it's, it's reactive to maltreatment. The mask mandate really is a cover story, I believe. It's a diversion from the real story, which is banning our God-given right to choose over, over obedience through, through coercion, and that's the use of force or intimidation through penalties to, to obtain compliance, and it's that simple. When the mandate was announced, the right choice for the superintendent would have been to challenge the governor and told him, "Governor, I'm here to run a school, I'm not here to implement mandates. I will not threaten the students of the district with expulsion if they exercise their right to choose." I wish you'd done that, because you would have earned a massive amount of respect, and I would have gone to battle for you, and a lot of other people would have. But you didn't, you went along. Now we lose our freedom of choice. I don't blame you. You're standing up to, you know, standing up to coercion is not an easy thing to do. Again, that's the use of force or intimidation through penalties to obtain compliance. That's a pretty powerful motivator. I want to know what sort of financial incentives the governor granted the district for compliance. I also like to know the financial penalties that the governor threatened the district with if they failed to comply. Between 2019 and 2021, Governor Murphy removed the statewide cap on superintendent salaries. According to Gov. salaries, you know, your, your salary went up 54 and a half percent, up to about a quarter mil annually. I wonder what sort of penalties you would have suffered personally if you stood up to the governor in defense of our constitutional right to choose? What would happen to that salary of yours, that, this job of yours? You're good standing with the governor. Self-preservation and staking, taking a stand on freedom to choose, or, or it's taking that stand, that's a big nut to lose. To the board, you're also culpable. By not taking a vote on the matter, you told us two things. You'd rather keep your mouth shut, because the voters would then know which one of you they should keep in office or vote off the board. Your failure to fight in defense of our constitutional right to choose violates your oath of office. I have each of your oaths of office, copies of them. I solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the United, of the State of New Jersey, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same, to the governments established in the United States and this state under the authority of the people. So your failures as elected officials needs to stop today. You still have time to save yourselves, not much, because nothing's going to stop what's going to happen when we start legally recalling you, legally filing lawsuits against you for violating your oaths.
Time's up, sir.
Have a good evening.
Thank you for coming this evening, sir. Would anyone else like to speak to the board?
Hello, my name is Bonnie Wilson. I live at 34 Stratford Road. I have two young children in the district, and I'm here, Lori already covered some of our concerns, but a lot of parents have, we've moved on from even acknowledging the debate from the mask mandate and vaccine requirements, because it's what it is policy, and we are grateful for that, that you, that our state and our district respect science and medical professionals. So that being said, we feel that we need to move beyond this argument, and we are currently concerned about the proper air filtration in the classrooms, but also why maybe we couldn't explore an outdoor situation for lunch, at least until things get a little bit more under control. I know logistically, it's probably a nightmare, but we all feel a lot safer if our kids are removing their masks outdoors instead of inside. One of us received an answer when we asked about what the definition of contact tracing would be, and we're not going to be notified if our child is exposed to a child with COVID, if it happens while they're eating lunch, because it's not long enough. I believe that was the answer. So we just want to kind of get more specifics on that. And then also, the policy regarding how the parents are notified when a child might be diagnosed with COVID and in that classroom. When we asked specifically, we were told, "We think that the teacher or the district will notify parents," but they weren't sure of the details, so that's all, we kind of just want to get more information. Thank you for everything that you do, and I'm just here, because I was home with a four-year-old and a six-year-old last year, and I want them to stay in school, please. Thank you.
Thank you for coming to speak tonight. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to the board? Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Maria Mangello. I live on 200 Willow Street. I actually just have three questions to kind of clear things out. Sorry, I'm a little nervous. This is my first time. So is the children going to wear the masks throughout the whole day? But they're going for lunch, and while they're going to eat lunch, they're going to take their masks off. My question is, how is the schools going to prevent, what are they going to do to try to clean the lunchrooms between the, the times when one group of children are going to come in to eat and the other children, and what are they going to do while the kids, without the masks, maybe 50, 70 kids in one big room, eating lunch together? My other question to you is, I've been hearing a lot of stories that the vaccinated people also, as unvaccinated people, can carry COVID, and I've been hearing about that there will be maybe some testing on vaccinated children. And I was wondering, when are you thinking of start doing this? And are you only going to do the testing on unvaccinated, or do you going to do on both, since the both can carry COVID? And my third question is, I just read an article in a patch just a few days ago, that their school received so much money, it was about $925 per child on the COVID relief. I was wondering if there's some kind of a list of exactly what was included in the COVID relief, because the patch did not specify it, and what is included in that relief that has to do with the COVID, and what is in that list that has nothing to do with the COVID? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to the board this evening?
Just another question. Is that okay?
One time per person.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak to the board this evening? See? Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry, sir, it's one, it's one time per person. If you can leave your contact information, and I will have a relevant administrator get back to you. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Hi, my name's Tracy Sherman. I'm Pelham Place, East Brunswick, a former alumna of East Brunswick, currently working as a substitute here and activity assistant. I know as Governor Murphy mandated that all of us need to be vaccinated, I was just wondering, I had a question of when and how you'd be collecting proof of verification of vaccination for me and other staff, and additionally, if, I know, Murphy also said that if you were unvaccinated, that you'd be testing, if that is on the responsibility of the individual to schedule testing, or if the district will be in charge of making sure that they're tested however regularly that you are expected to be. That's all I have. I will leave my contact information if you choose not to answer tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming to speak to us tonight. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to the board this evening? Yes, sir. Good evening.
Hi, how are you? Leon Gervich. I have two kids in East Brunswick High School, two daughters, 14 and 17, live in 16 Camelot Drive. I wasn't prepared to speak today, I just thought it was important to, first of all, lend my support to the board. I think as I look up at everybody that's sitting over here, we're all part of a community, and when I look at everybody here, when I look at everybody in the audience over here, I think about we, you know, we as East Brunswick and the community that we have. And it's unfortunate that I hear some of these comments talking about the me, you know, the individual, as a separate entity to that community. As we think about my rights, I have rights, you know, I have things that I'd like to do, but I also feel like, you know, my rights are predicated on the, my responsibility to the community, and the mask mandate and a lot of the things that we're doing right now are exactly that. It's such a incredibly, I'm not going to go into medical commentary, such a small sacrifice that we all make, to put this little piece of fabric protection to protect the other people around us, and I am amazed that this is still a debate. My wife is a teacher. She's into her 50s. I can't say exactly, otherwise she'll be upset, okay? She wears a mask all day long. My daughter worked in a camp outside with her Apple Watch, counted that her average steps were five miles a day, outdoors in 80 to 90 degrees, in a mask, for the benefit of her campers. And we forget in this entire commentary that we are not just wearing this mask for us, for the kids, for other kids. I keep hearing comments, "My kid is healthy, my kid is okay." I think everybody sitting over here right now recognizes that your responsibility is for every single child. The children that are immune compromised, the kids that have parents at home that are immune compromised, the teachers that are on average over the age of 50, okay, and want to come into work, want to teach, want to be in this environment.
Thirty seconds.
So I just want to say, I'm embarrassed when I hear people talking about the me and my rights and my responsibility, you know, what is, I'm allowed to? We're a we, and I hope that we can come back to that. Thank you for everything that you're doing.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for coming to speak to us tonight. Yes, sir. Good evening.
Good evening, sorry to take a little bit more time. I thought I'll say a couple of words too, if I may. Thank you for the opportunity to be here and talk about issues that are important for us.
Your name and address, please, for the record.
My name is Vladislav Valentinov. I live on Brookdale Road.
Could you repeat your name, please?
Vladislav. So I wrote something. So you as a school board have decided that our kids should go to the school all day, every day, wearing face diapers, sorry, masks. From what I've heard during the last meeting and today, I've noticed that if, that it was missing a few things, namely evidence, data, science, common sense, and basic human decency. No unadvocating masks presented facts, but only feelings. Here are some facts. COVID possesses almost no risk to our kids at all. 4.2 million children have tested positive for COVID, that's true. A total of 0.008% of them have died. What about the flu? CDC estimated that 480 kids died from the flu in the previous season before COVID happened that apparently eliminated flu. That's more death than COVID in a year and a half, which again, if you get it, is more dangerous to kids than COVID. That's a fact. Now, did anyone on this board, or anybody before, in the room, suggest at any point that year that kids wear masks for the flu? Of course not, we are not stupid, until someone, for whatever reason, do the thinking for us. You didn't learn that masks work. You've been told it is so. Is it though? Numerous studies came out disproving masks' efficacy, and many studies warned about psychological and mental harm they cause. Do you know what it's called when you force your child to wear masks out of fear of a virus that possesses almost no threat to them? It's called human, it's, it's called human abuse. Now, do any of you know that sort of psychological damage we do to children by forcing them to cover their faces, teaching them that the air is toxic, that everyone around them is sick, to deprive them of the ability to see each other's faces? Do you know what kind of damage that does? Have you thought about it? Have, have you wondered about the health effects that force the kids to breathe through sweat and spit and dirt-soaked racks every single day? Are you sure that there is no health risks? Do you know what the effect is on child developmentally if they do not able to read each other facial cues? What about learning to read and they can't see the, the teachers initiating the words? What does it do to child development, developing immune system if you ask to wear a mask all day, every day? You are satisfied to place this burden on children anyway, and why? It's not to keep them safe, it's to keep adults safe.
Thank you.
Right, thank you.
Thank you for coming to speak to us tonight, sir. Yes, sir.
Hello, my name is Oleg Dolin. I live in East Brunswick, 13 Lake Women Lane. I have two kids, one in the middle school, one at Churchill. To the point Vladislav made, the efficacy of masks has been known since 1918 flu pandemic. I don't know where you grew up. I grew up in the Soviet Union.
Me too.
Okay.
Me too.
Hi. My mother- My mother wore a mask when she had the flu to protect me, I remember that. I also remember in UMAC classes, they taught us to make masks, masks during the flu outbreaks, okay? So, you know, I don't know why we're still debating it. What we can all agree, all of us here, we can all agree that we want our kids back in school, and we want our kids back in school full-time and safely. We also all want choices. Some of us want a choice to vaccinate our children. My, my youngest is eleven and a half, he's not eligible yet. Based on what I read from about nineteen eighteen flu pandemic, everything that we know now, masks work to protect one another. There is no better option right now to protect the kids. The statistics you brought up, zero point zero eight percent deaths, polio had zero point zero five percent deaths, sorry, zero point zero five chance of having that iron lung machine, and that was considered a big freaking deal. I'm sorry for the language. There was a time in this country, it was considered a big deal. Why is this zero point zero eight not a big deal? So, I support the efforts this board is making and the governor to keep our kids safe. The most important thing for me is to have both of my kids in school full-time. The worst thing that happened to them was not mask-wearing, it was one year away from school. That's it, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir, for coming to talk to us tonight, thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to the board this evening? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. I'm Dana Zimbicki, President of the East Brunswick Education Association. There is nothing more important to the teachers and support staff of our district than welcoming our students back on September ninth. We have worked very hard to ensure that we gave the best possible education remotely, and now we wanna see them face-to-face, just as we are tonight. We're very excited, that's the bottom line. Welcome back.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming to speak with us tonight. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to the board? Seeing none, I will close the public portion, and thank everyone for coming tonight. Moving on to our agenda, we're going to start out with our Board of Education items. Before I ask to combine items one to three, is there anything anyone wants separated out? Seeing none, can I please have a motion for Board of Education items one through three? So moved. Moved by Lori, second by Jeff. Is there any discussion? Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mr. Crangelo.
Yes.
Mrs. Chu.
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar.
Yes.
Mrs. Wos.
Yes.
Mr. Hong.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Winston.
Yes.
President Becker.
Yes, motion carries. Moving on to our community programs, there's one item tonight. Can I please have a motion for item number one?
So moved.
Moved by Lori, second by Jeff. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Before I ask to combine items one to three on our curriculum instruction agenda tonight, is there anything anyone wants separated out? Seeing none, can I please have a motion for items one through three?
So moved.
Moved by Lori, second by Mark Chu. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank the district for this program, the College Pathways Program, and just maybe we could tell the public a little bit more about, you know, what it entails, because it's a wonderful opportunity for students.
Thank you, Mrs. Reese. The College Pathways Program was really designed to give our students the opportunity to take college credit at East Brunswick High School under a teacher that's actually approved by Middlesex College. Middlesex Community College actually renamed themselves into Middlesex College, and the basis for this is to have an opportunity for our students, at the optimum, to achieve an associate's degree and be able to graduate with a high school diploma at the same time. Now, students can choose to take as many courses as they wish, or go as far as they wish, but it's to provide a breadth for our students to be able to take college-level courses and get credit for those, and it's a cost-effective mechanism for parents because it's very low tuition. I believe it's two hundred dollars per three credits, is that correct? I'm guessing, yeah, not sure. Is it one hundred per three credits?
One twenty-five.
One twenty-five, and then that includes a four-credit lab course, correct?
Amazing.
So that's a, that's a huge cost savings to parents, especially if a child decides to pursue an associate's degree or didn't come close to it. In the Middlesex College, associate's degree is transferable to many colleges and universities, so that does give students the benefit of accumulating two years of rigorous college before they even go off to their choice of a four-year institution. That advances them if they wanna go out and pursue a master's degree, or, like I said, just economically, but it is, it is a highly popular, not activity, but an option for our students, and we're constantly trying to promote that as a benefit to our students and their parents.
Dr. Valesky, if a student wishes to take the class, not for credit, but for the rigor, for the challenge themselves, so they wouldn't be paying any tuition, they wouldn't receive credit, can they still take the course?
Yes, the same course, it's a high school course.
Great, thank you. Lori?
I was just gonna add, because my daughter did that, what's nice is they're not doing additional work, they're not going onto the campus, they're doing everything in campus here, but actually, if you could answer your question, there are children in that course that don't enroll and don't get the transcript from Middlesex that would just do it, but it's a, it's a great, it's a great deal for parents.
And even if you do like one semester, let's say over, over the course of your time at the high school, you do three classes that will worth twelve credits, you've saved so much money for college, because that semester somewhere else could cost way more than it does here.
I think you can also take some of the requirements too, right? You can actually take a requirement so your child can go into college and be able to have some of the requirements that they may not wanna do when they get to college already under their belt, so that's kinda nice.
I see Susanna's hand up, was there somebody over here? Okay, Susanna?
Yeah, I just wanted to add, as a parent of two kids who took advantage of, of these credits and took them into college, you're gonna save money, guys. You're gonna save money, guys. So, you know, please pay attention to it and take advantage of it if it fits for your child.
Thank you.
If I could too, if I could say that this goes to speak to the rigor that our teachers teach at in the high school, and to be able to get this certification from Middlesex College, that they're qualified to teach college-level courses, it really speaks highly to the professionalism and the, the, just the intensity which our students are exposed at the high school level.
We're so fortunate, you have to have a master's degree to teach at this level, so it's, we're very fortunate to have such wonderful people.
And as I think someone said, they're more comfortable taking it in our classrooms, on our campus with our wonderful teachers, so it's a...
Where can they start teaching classes?
It's a win-win situation.
Tenth grade.
Thank you.
They'll give them an opportunity to see if they don't like something as well. Instead of spending ten thousand dollars at school, they spend relatively less.
Ten thousand dollars?
Well, for a semester or something.
Where can you...
But it gives them an opportunity to see if they want to travel that path.
Absolutely, very good point, Mark, very good point.
Or not.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Moving on to our facilities agenda, before I ask for a motion to combine items one through four, is there anything anyone wants separated out? Seeing none, can I please have a motion for items one through four?
So moved.
Moved by Lori, second by Mark. Is there any discussion?
I just wanna know who's gonna be doing the shoveling, Dr. Valesky. I see there's a... Snow plowing, if we add that to your job description, I wasn't aware of.
That will be part of my job.
It is okay, I'll write that in, thank you.
Excellent suggestion, Mr. Winston, thinking out of the box. I like it.
I just wanna document it in the minutes, that's it.
Excellent, excellent. Any other suggestions for Dr. Valesky? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Moving on to our financial services agenda, before I ask to combine items one through four, is there anything anyone wants separated out? Seeing none, can I please have a motion for items one through four?
So moved.
Moved by Lori?
Second.
Second.
Second by Heather, is there any discussion? Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mr. Crangelo.
Yes.
Mrs. Chu.
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar.
Yes.
Mrs. Wos.
Yes.
Mr. Hong.
Yes.
Mrs. Lax.
Yes.
Mrs. Reese.
Yes.
Mr. Winston.
Yes.
President Becker.
Yes, motion carries. Moving on to our human resources agenda, before I ask to combine items one through three, is there anything anyone wants separated out? Seeing none, can I please have a motion for human resources items one through three?
So moved.
Moved by Lori, second by Jeff. Is there any discussion? Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Crangelo.
Yes.
Mrs. Chu.
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar.
Yes.
Mrs. Wos.
Yes.
Mr. Hong.
Yes.
Mrs. Lax.
Yes.
Mrs. Reese.
Yes.
Mr. Winston.
Yes.
President Becker.
Yes, motion carries. We have one item on our staff development agenda tonight, can I please have a motion for that item?
So moved.
Moved by Lori?
Second.
Second by Mark Chu. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Mark one.
Hi, I'm sorry Dr. Bowley's not here tonight, I hope somebody could answer my questions about the professional development training. I'm usually a huge advocate of professional development, but there's several concerns I have with this course, so I would either ask if, if my questions can't be answered tonight, could we table this to another meeting, so they can be answered in the public session?
I would prefer to have Dr. Bowley involved in the conversation.
That's, that's why, yeah, that's why I, I brought that up.
Okay, so...
We'll need a motion to table.
I'll make a motion to table this until a future meeting when we can, yeah, Dr. Bowley.
I'll second that.
Second by Jeff?
Yes.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries, shall be tabled.
Thanks.
For the next meeting.
Absolutely, thank you very much, Mark. Moving on to our student services agenda, before I ask for a motion to combine items one through six, is there anything anyone wants separated out? Seeing none, can I please have a motion for items one through six?
So moved.
Moved by Jeff, second by Lori. Is there any discussion? Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mr. Crangelo.
Yes.
Mrs. Chu.
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar.
Yes.
Mrs. Wos.
Yes.
Mr. Hong.
Yes.
Mrs. Lax.
Yes.
Mrs. Reese.
Yes.
Mr. Winston.
Yes.
President Becker.
Yes, motion carries. Before I ask for a motion to combine items one through two on our transportation services agenda, is there anything anyone wants separated out? Seeing none, can I please have a motion for items one through two on the transportation agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Lori.
Heather got me by a tenth of a second.
Okay, Heather by a nose. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Okay, moving on to our committee report, we are going to start out tonight with Nora, our student rep. How are you, Nora?
I'm good, how are you?
The end of the summer's here.
So we had, as we saw some pictures from orientation earlier this week, or two days ago, yesterday? Yesterday. I was fortunate to be invited to be able to speak to the incoming sophomores, and I had my vice president membership for student council with me, and we just talked about what they could look forward to coming up to the high school, and what we would be interested in asking from them, like to join clubs and be more involved in everything, and we had a staff welcome back this morning, student council was there, some cheer, the cheerleaders were there, and marching band and orchestra was there, and it was a very festive, fun event. It was a great way to, again, just get back into the school, interact with the teachers a little bit, and see some athletics, and academics, some of the arts, and additionally, we have nothing new to report about homeroom representatives or anything like that, but I did just wanted to, I did just want to bring up again, we're building the new normal with this school year, we have new block schedules, the lunches are a little bit different, we have homerooms, and we're starting our homeroom representatives. Voting will be the second week of school, so we'll be able to set that up very quickly, and hopefully have a more direct line of contact with the student body and administration. That's all I have.
Excellent report, Nora. We look forward to you keeping us informed all this year. Wish you a good start next week to your senior year. Exciting.
I think it's gonna go great, we've been working really hard, and I know everyone here has been working very hard to help us out.
Absolutely. Okay, any committee reports, information items, or the good or the cause for the board? Jeff?
In terms of good or the cause, we heard a lot here tonight, a lot of viewpoints on a lot of issues, and I just don't want anybody to lose sight of the fact that most of what we do here is for the kids and the teachers and the staff, and I am so excited for these students to get back into the classroom. I think the administration has done an exceptional job in clearing the path to give the students the opportunity to make comments like that, and when I hear, this is going to be a great year from a senior, this is going to be a great year for this district, and I applaud everybody, and I look forward to what the teachers and the kids and the administration are going to produce, in spite of everything.
Thank you, Jeff. As I had said at the beginning, I couldn't agree with you more, it was beautifully said. We have seen our teachers, our support staff, our administrators, our central office team work so hard for, is it a year and a half, is it two years yet? I've almost lost...
Not quite, but it feels like it.
Half an eternity.
Okay.
That's right.
For the kids, that's what it comes down to. So, we continue to move forward, we continue to raise the bar for them and for ourselves, because we have to, because we are faced with new challenges every day, but because we embrace all the stakeholders, because we work as partners, as a team, with our teachers, with our administrators, with all of us, with our community, we make it work. We've had a lot thrown our way, right?
Yeah.
And we'll make it work, and we will continue to. So everybody up here, you're all awesome, we feel real good about those kids coming in the door next week, and our staff being there to meet them. Anyone else have anything for closed session?
I think...
Li Wu, and then Mark, or is that just a scratch?
It's a scratch and probably a question.
Okay, no, I have...
Tonight, so we extend Victor's contract for two more years. I just want to thank you, Dr. Valesky, for your hardworking and for your leadership. Since I've become a board member, this is my first year, so your leadership, I witnessed it. As a board member, I'm so glad, you know, I have the opportunity to work with you. As a parent, and I'm so fortunate, I have you as our superintendent, and I believe many, many parents in this school district appreciate, have the similar idea or identical idea I have. So facing, for two more years, you will have a lot more challenge, but I believe you will do a great job, even better, in next two years. So maybe next time when your contract come to the table, I may, I may not be sitting here, but people will like to have you as long as possible. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just, just for the record on that, and I know exactly what you, what you were saying, Mr. Hong, but just for the record, Dr. Valesky's contract is extended through June of 2026.
Oh, four years, I'm sorry.
I thought that was important to clarify.
I wanted to extend that same...
I wanted to extend that same gratitude for Bernie as well. Being on the board such a short time, I see how much work you do, and I want to say I appreciate what you do too. I see it, and I appreciate it.
We're not extending his contract.
No, he's never.
We're going to leave.
As long as I'm on. I wanted to discuss one more thing, one more thing. I bring it to Victor all the time about the field. I'm on it all the time, just about every day, running or doing exercises. What's going on with the football field and where are we going to play the games, you know, football games? Because we're displaced right now.
We have, so I put out a message today that talked about we're going to have to isolate the turf field because it's unplayable right now, but we want to make the track accessible to the community and to our athletes. Lou and Frank Malta have worked very hard to come up with an alternate schedule. We've taken all of our home games and replayed, put them into other districts, so we've made arrangements. And I want to publicly thank the districts that we reached out to that provided an opportunity for us to play with them. We had Sayerville, we had, did we have Old Bridge?
Old Bridge, Monroe, I think we've talked to.
Monroe.
Will there be an announcement of where these games will be played so we can go?
Yes, we have a master schedule made up.
Yes, we're still working on the last details with each district to make sure that, because now what we're doing is basically playing a home game at an off-site location. So there's a lot that has to be worked out, but we will, we'll have that, and we'll make sure we get all that information out to the public as soon as it's confirmed.
Mr. Giuliani, do you want to mention anything about the, we emailed the board before this meeting about the process, but.
Certainly.
There is a process we must go through.
So, unfortunately, Tropical Storm Henry did us no favors and essentially destroyed that field. But we did bring a company out to take a look, to see if there was an opportunity to salvage and restore it. Unfortunately, and the hesitation on doing anything really comes to one key piece that was in the summary that we received, and that was that even if they stretched out the field to make it nice and even, that students could be at risk of injury. With that potential, there's no doing anything to it at this point. So, we immediately engaged our engineers to begin looking at the original plans that we had done when we first did the renovations at that location. I have a meeting coming up with them to go into the details. We don't know what resides under the field in terms of what the condition of the drainage systems are. So that's kind of an unknown, and, you know, for the amount of water that remained on that field and caused the problems that we have, we could have a potential drainage problem there. So we've got to do some exploration. So bottom line is this is going to take a little bit of time. It will take time to, I think, do the assessment, put together the appropriate drawings that are necessary to go to bid, go through a bid process, ultimately, award a contract and have that contract begin, and one additional key point, we have to identify the financing. So this was an unplanned event. So, but we're going to get it done. We'll get it done.
What's the conversation been like with insurance?
This isn't going to be covered by insurance. The problem being that the field has gone through essentially its useful life.